All right. Greetings and welcome to the Hanson Select Board Meeting of Tuesday, November 19th. We are meeting at the lovely Camp Kawani, which is available for rent. And this meeting is being recorded by Whitman Hanson Community Access Television. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution, the Constitution of which stands on our nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. We have got some public announcements, Mr. Hill. Would you care to read those for us?
I will. Very short and sweet today. We are looking for citizens at large to become members of the following committees: The Bylaw Committee, the Cable and Internet Committee, the Economic Development Committee, Energy Committee, Historical Commission, Recreation Committee, Memorial Day and Patriotic Observance Committee, and the Zoning Vote of Appeals. Volunteer applications may be found at the town website, www.hanson-mass.gov, or by calling the Select Board's office at 781-293-2131. And the upcoming Select Board meetings are December 3rd and December 10th. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. That brings us to our hearing, classification hearing, and I think that there's some type of a announcement that was supposed to read, but I don't seem to have that. Ms. Green.
All right. So we'll just treat it as a public hearing, and if there's preparatory language, there's not much I can do about that. Okay. So we are going to, I will entertain a motion to open the classification hearing.
So moved.
Okay. Roll call?
Aye.
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 Okay. Great.
Feel free. Good evening. Denise Alexander, the Assessor, and I'm here tonight with my chairman of our Board of Assessors, Crystal Payne. And for anybody watching from home, feel free to go to the website, the town website, and you can get the pamphlet there on the front page under news. I think it's the board link down, so if you wanted to follow along tonight. I'm here to present to the Select Board the fiscal year 2025 classification hearing. The purpose of the classification hearing is to determine whether the town of Hanson will continue to utilize a single tax rate for all classes of property or to split the tax rate, shifting the burden toward the commercial, industrial, and personal property. We are here to present the information compiled by our office for allocating the percentage of levy to be borne by each property class. If you turn to page two of our booklet, you can see there that these are the three votes that will be required of the Select Board this evening. The first one is whether or not to adopt, to select a uniform tax rate or a split tax rate. The second one for vote would be whether or not to adopt the residential exemption. And the third is whether or not to adopt the small commercial exemption. On page three, this displays the scenarios of how the tax rate would shift between residential, commercial, and personal properties. Based on our current information, the tax rate is at $13.38 per thousand for fiscal year 2025 as a single rate, which coincidentally is exactly the same rate as we had last year. Page four is a bar chart. That shows the percentages between classes. Residential tax is our primary class, is at 93%, whereas the commercial, industrial, and personal property combined are around 7%. On page five and six, this presents the detailed tax dollars amounts affected by the tax rate if we were to adopt a split rate using the average assessed values of single-family, residential, and commercial industrial properties. Hanson has such a small rate of commercial property that adopting a split rate would shift the logic over onto the commercial, industrial, and personal property owners. Hanson's Select Board has always voted to maintain a single tax rate for this reason. The Board of Assessors have recommended a uniform tax rate for fiscal year 2025. And your first vote of the evening is whether or not to adopt a uniform tax rate or a split tax rate. I'll leave that to the Select Board.
Can you want the uniform? That's your recommendation?
We recommend yes. The Board of Assessors recommends the uniform tax rate.
So moved.
So, just, yeah, can you just walk us through a little bit of the 1% shift, 5% shift?
So.
That's shifting the tax burden onto the commercial.
Yes, it's shifting the burden to the commercial. And these are in increments of 1% to 25%. I think I went up to 25% to show you what would happen if we did shift. What the residential tax rate would look like and what the commercial, industrial, and personal property would look like. And it does show you the average families' residential and commercial property values. And to the right, it shows you the actual tax bill for those based on the tax rates that you're seeing here.
Okay. Did anybody want to explore that any further?
I don't think that's a good idea at all.
Historically, we've never done that because frankly, we want to do whatever we can to welcome businesses here, so.
Exactly. Because it would definitely would push them out. It could push them out since we don't have so many yet.
Yep. Okay. So, Mr. Weeks, you had made a motion to...
Go with the uniform tax rate. Second invite, Anne.
Yep. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And our second vote is whether or not to adopt a residential exemption. Can you speak to that?
Sure. Yeah, I will. And I just skipped a couple of pages. It might be important that you might want to look at it. It just gives you a visual. It shows you the jump in that values. Page seven and eight. Eight is the bar chart. And it kind of gives you a different look to it. It's a little bit easy to follow, maybe, but between 2003, 2004, we had about a 9% to 10% tax rate. I'm not sorry, not tax rate. 9% to 10% increase in values between 2003 and 2004. But as you can see in 2004 to 2005, there was only like a 3% across the board between two and three, commercial and residential.
And so, this is something we hear all the time. They keep increasing our taxes. They're increasing our taxes. So can you address that? Because the tax rate actually is not increasing.
The tax rate's not changing. So it's not that, so the values are being increased due to the sales in town. We get the deeds in every month, so the sales are proving through statisticals and analyzing them. It adjusts everything across the board, and because the values are going up, everybody's values are going up, whether it's a ranch or a colonial. It's analyzed and it's adjusted every year. But the adjustments have been going up. Where it didn't go up by much this year, we, the tax rate didn't change as drastically.
And another question, you know, another thing that I hear a lot of times people say is, oh, well, you know, Hanson's increasing their property values more than other surrounding towns. What is the process for determining, you know, what are the values that you use? What's the, and I know that I'm asking you basically like, how was a pyramid built? And can you please explain this in one minute or less? But, you know...
Can you get to the tax dollar, the tax rate, can you?
No. The assessed property value. How do we decide what an assessed property value is? Is that something you're just doing on your own? Are there, is there a rubric you're using?
So, we have, as I said, we get the deeds in. So the deeds approve of the value, what the sales are actually doing. And it gives us, so based on the qualified sales only, we don't use the private sales and all disclosures, just the qualified sales. So we do set those, we call, we do many things to dissect that. Once we have our values, the qualified values set, that, like I said, will, it's an algorithm that our appraisal company has. So they get strategized by the sales. And so ranches, they're going it higher than, you know, or even the land is done that way, you know, even the residual, the land residual. Everything's sort of put into the, into the plot, the qualified sales. And then they're strategized. And then to see where the changes for the sales ratio falls, it can be an assessment. And this year, they made adjustments due to the sales, and the adjustments all came up that they only really had to adjust by 3% across the board.
Okay. So it won't be as drastic.
It won't be as drastic that way.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Did anybody have any questions on that? So, the residential tax exemption is for property owners of Class 1 residential property who own and occupy their property. A percentage is applied to exempting dollar amount of a value that is exempt from taxation. This is usually adopted in communities that have a high rate of rental properties. Now, the Board of Assessors has recommended that we do not vote to adopt that residential exemption. So I will entertain a motion to vote not to adopt the residential exemption. So, okay. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Great. And whether or not to adopt a small commercial exemption. And this one is one that every year you guys explain to us. And Denise, do you mind just giving us, laying that one up for us?
So, the small commercial exemption, it's based on, we get, we get a list every year from the Department of Employment and Training of the businesses that are in Hanson, that are considered small businesses. And after looking through, and we have to take out the ones that are over a million and do all of our, just to get the ones that are under a million and have less than 10 employees. Like, if it was a strip mall and you were leasing from this building, you would have to have less than 10 employees in every single one to be considered a small business commercial. But the thing about this one is that the commercial building gets the break.
Right.
Whether they pass that down to all these small businesses, that's, we don't know if they would do that. In Hanson, we had 23 businesses that own and occupy the properties, but they don't own them. So they, we don't know if that would get passed down. There were really only 15 businesses that would actually benefit out of the 38 that I, that we came up with originally.
And we've already...
That would shift a tax, shift a tax rate to the remaining commercial as well.
Right. But we've already voted to keep a uniform tax rate, which in a way is a benefit to all of the businesses. And so, so this may benefit a few big land, you know, landlords, but it isn't going to benefit every little business in town. All right. So, and again, you guys have recommended that we not, we not adopt the small commercial exemption. So I will entertain a motion not to adopt the small commercial exemption.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Great.
And lastly, I just wanted to notify the Select Board of the excess levy capacity for fiscal year 2025. The excess levy capacity is currently at $3,946.58. This doesn't require a vote, just notification as part of the classification hearing. And then on behalf of the Board of Assessors in my office, the entire office, I'd like to thank our financial team, Eric Kinsch, the treasure collector, Lisa Clark, and our town servant, Beth Stone, sorry, for all the diligent work that they did to get this all together.
This is your first official...
Yes.
...so-called flight, although you've got a team behind you, but, you know.
I do, yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Well, well done. And is there anything else that you, I think you've got the votes that you needed from us?
Yeah. Nope. It concludes the classification for 2025 presentation.
Okay. So I will entertain, did anybody present have anything that they wanted to mention about the hearing, you know, or say about the classification?
I think you did an amazing job. Really well done.
Oh, thank you. I'm going to try to better it every year if I can.
Thank you. Perfect.
Thank you.
Okay. I will entertain a motion to close the classification here.
So moved.
Okay. All in favor? Okay. Great.
Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. All right. That brings us to promote Ryan Shaughnessy to Sergeant. And we've got Casey here, and welcome. Join the, join the round, please. Yes.
Thanks for having us. So, this was a process that started in July. We put out the bid for an assessment for a company, and we hired the Public Safety Consultants. Chief Russell Stevens from Hamilton is the controller of the company and the assessment. I worked diligently with him to set up the procedure, set up the structure of it, and then we announced in August. So this was a three-month in the making for the officers. We had seven officers apply and participate in the assessment. That took place on November 2nd. And there was five parts to it, and they all had value of 20%. These officers have to study for three months, policy and procedures, criminal and constitutional law, rules and regulations. We implemented that all into this assessment where 20% was a 75-question test. And then there was four scenarios where they would face two separate chiefs, groups of three. Some were current, some were retired. And this was an eight-hour-long process with these guys. So it was very stressful. And throughout the day, they had to then go in front of them, and they had a rapid-fire question-and-answer. They had to deal with a civilian complaint, they had to deal with a critical incident, and then they had to deal with a troubled employee. All of those assessments were then tallied up, and then we had these results that placed Officer Ryan Shaughnessy on top of the list. Ryan, he's a young guy, he's 29 years old. If I can speak frankly, the kid is, he's mature amongst his years. He's a step. We were fortunate to grab him three years ago. He came from the Sheriff's Department. He's been an amazing addition to us, and I think that he's proven to everyone internally and through the assessment that he's ready for the next step and to move up to promotion to Sergeant. I want to add also, if I could, the six other officers that prepared themselves for this. The test ranged literally from '84, '83, each, all the way down. This was a close race, which only proves to us that all our guys are squared away. They took this seriously, they prepared, and we're just in good hands with a lot of young guys that are only better than us as a department, the study, and made themselves even a better officer, even if they're not at this time fortunate enough to get promoted.
That's good for succession planning, though, to know that you've got that much talent.
We have a lot of talent.
And I love the idea of a third independent party making that determination instead of, you know, inside baseball, if somebody likes somebody or whatever. It's empirical data. So, you know...
And how it used to be, Laura, was before, it was just an initial test, and you had to get a 70 or above. Well, these assessments, you can't fake. You know, these situations that are, that you're brought up against, you have to know it. And just, you know, anyone can, and I'm not saying anyone, but anyone can, you know, absorb some information and take a test and hopefully, but what they were tasked at, that's career, that's buildup, and you can't fake that stuff. So, you know, they'll say, and the cream rises to the top, this young gentleman proving that he's ready, and I think that he's just going to, this guy's the limit for him.
And what is the effective date of the proposed promotion?
So that, the motion for that?
Oh, I've got that. Sorry. Okay.
Be January 1st.
So, did you want to, as our vote, make that motion?
I make a motion to promote Officer Ryan Shaughnessy to the rank of Police Sergeant in the town of Hanson effective January 1, 2025.
Sold. Or second, I mean.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Great. Thanks for, and congratulations to Sergeant Shaughnessy.
Yes. Thank you.
That's awesome.
And at some point, we'll have some formal...
Yeah. I would like to do that sometime after the first of the year, once we promote him. And we have some other things in the making, so.
That would be great. Yep. All right. We'd like to get people to our meeting, so. By hook, by crook. All right. Great. Thank you. All right. We're going to take a few things out of order because Mr. Hill has to leave us, and so we're going to try to juggle a little bit.
For a short time.
Yeah. Yes. I'm sorry. I made it sound like you were on your last leg of life or something.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Yes, he needs to leave for a very short period of time to come back. At our last meeting, we had Chief O'Brien talk to us about the portable, the proposal for the portable generator. Since that time, we did get, we did get an opinion from legal counsel that they felt that the language in the, in the warrant and the article was sufficiently vague. It didn't say hardwired, or it didn't say portable, that we probably could do whatever we wanted. That said, you know, I have had an opportunity to speak again to Ms. Stouffer at the library and to the president of the foundation, and I've thought a lot about it. And I really think that the case we made at town meeting was, this was for the senior center and the library. And just because you can do something doesn't mean you should. And so even though we may have some legal latitude there, I had an opportunity to talk to Chief O'Brien the day after our meeting, and I said, you know, I hope I didn't come across as super spicy last night, but I am really like grappling with this. And he said, no, 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 I understand where you guys were coming from. I really just wish I had thought about this beforehand, and maybe the article would have been proposed differently. He did mention that he has an opportunity to enter into a contract with a, you know, like a rental company, so that anytime we were to, if the worst-case scenario, which he articulated at our last meeting, should happen, which is that although the fire department, police department, water, they all have generators, that if one of those should fail, that we would have a contract that would allow us to get a backup generator from a rental company. And we've got these evergreen contracts for a number of other things that we might need in an emergency. And, you know, and I loved Chief O'Brien articulating the need for this and thinking about it. And I did say to him, if you really feel that it's something we need permanently, then come back at us for a town meeting warrant article, or look for funding, look for, you know, grants. There may be like federal emergency management grants, you know, that type of thing. So he did commit to that. And he said that he got the sense when he was with us that we probably weren't going to vote to support that, so. So, but I did just want to get a sense from everybody. Does anybody feel strongly in another way that we should be supporting the mobile unit versus the hardwired?
It's a redundancy. The senior center library doesn't have a primary to be...
They don't.
So they need the primary.
Yeah.
And then we can worry about a redundancy.
Yes.
That's my feeling.
Yeah.
So basically, if I remember correctly, the idea was even if we got the senior center, that you said that it's either mobile or it's fixed, it's really the price. It is the senior center's generator either way. And then, how it's connected to the building, and then is a greater expense if we do the mobile one.
Correct.
And then if it is mobile, there would be discussions at a later time as far as shareability.
Well, all of what you said up until that last point, so it would sort of be as our emergency director, which is the designation that Chief O'Brien has in addition to being our fire chief, he would make the determination if there was a failure of the generator at one of the other locations, whether it would stay at the senior center or whether it would go someplace else. And I think that's where, you know, although I think everybody acknowledges, we want to have like that redundancy, definitely, but that's where I think it starts to feel like it's, like, you know, it isn't what people thought they were getting. And, you know, people thought heating, cooling at senior center library, people can go and charge regardless of whether it's hot weather, cool weather, or just a, you know, blackout because of a hurricane or whatever, that that would be the community place that people could go if they don't have electricity at their home. And in Chief O'Brien's scenario, there was a possibility that if everybody lost it and one of those generators failed, that wouldn't actually be...
Okay. Because I was hoping it would be like I had said, where it would be senior center unless until we actually, as a town, decided that we do want to share it, and then it'll be up to the town. Because the town did say it's the senior center. So if we get a mobile one and we pay the X amount of money more, and all of a sudden it's not the senior center, I'm totally against it.
But can't the town just buy another one and have one mobile?
That's, that's what we're going to look at. That's what we're going to look at.
You don't give the senior center the, go buy another one.
That's what we're going to look at. And again, there may be, I feel pretty strongly that there may be grants out there for this because we're not the only community dealing with trying to create redundancies for emergency situations. Like, we're having all these weird weather things all over the United States, so we're not the only ones. And, you know, but I want to make sure that now that Chief O'Brien has articulated this need, that none of us probably would have ever thought about until he mentioned that we needed a backup generator, that we do something about it. So I think entering into a contract is a good immediate Band-Aid. And then let's see what we can get for funding, and then, you know, if that doesn't play out, then we'll look at what we've got, you know, in the budget. So, is there anybody who feels differently? Do you feel any different?
No. I think Chief O'Brien's an asset to the town. I love his out-of-the-box thinking. I think he's looking at the right lens.
Yep.
All that being said, town meeting, only for the senior center to have the, and I come from a place where if you don't have the option to move it, you won't move it. The minute you have the option to move it, you're going to find things, and you're going to rationalize reasons to move it.
Yes.
And I don't want that.
That was my gut, and it's not just, I'm not disparaging anybody, but that was just my gut feeling.
No. It's not a matter of anybody being malicious, it's just human nature, just as it was.
Okay. So, Ms. Green, I think, you know, that gives you your marching orders. I don't think there's a need for us to take a vote because we're essentially just saying, yeah, what town meeting said, that's what we want to do.
So actually, do you want to take a vote?
Yeah, we have to take a vote, yeah.
Because at the last meeting, you tabled that one ARBA until today's meeting.
All right. So I will entertain a motion to stay the course with the generator and go with a hardwired backup generator for the exclusive use of the library in the senior center.
So moved.
Any further discussion? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Great. So that then, that was, what was earmarked there, Ms. Green? Was that $30,000?
Well, 30 was, if it were the mobile, that would be wrong.
Right. So...
So I think we put in...
That frees up $30,000 for our...
That frees up $30,000. I think we had put in either $800 or $800 for that.
Okay. All right. Great. Then that brings us to, I'm trying to think which one is, why don't we go with annual employee self-assessment discussion? Ms. Green?
So in your, in your packet, you should have a draft, employee assessment. It would have draft at the bottom of it. And this is for the employees, mark apartment heads. This is a draft that the union, the Administrative Professionals Union, you know, this type of format is what they drafted.
So this is a revision of what we had proposed?
Yes. Yes. With language that they are proposing.
And so could you walk us through what the proposed changes are?
There are two different forms for someone.
It's this one right here that has drafted.
Has drafted the bottom.
Where they strike everything, you know, since the last, I mean, so they should list their accomplishments that happened 10 years ago? Shouldn't it be from the last evaluation? That doesn't make any sense to me.
Well, some of them, we don't know when their last evaluations are, so, I'm sorry.
Well, we have to draw a line in sand. I mean, we don't want to hear, no offense, but we really don't want to hear about accomplishments from 15 years ago.
That's what I mean. I mean, since the last performance review, what's wrong with that language?
They may be saying, some of them have said that they have never received a performance review, so...
Oh, okay.
Which is what we're trying to remedy here.
Existing performance review. If there is one that exists.
If applicable.
Yeah. If applicable, yeah.
Yeah. Ms. Green, so I think we want to say something like, since the last performance review, if applicable.
Right. Okay.
And I think that that will be responsive to that.
And everything else can remain crossed out?
Um, substitute references, since the last...
Since the last performance review.
Your thoroughly, your accomplishments, this form is not, what is the, what this, this form is not to be used for disciplinary purposes? What, what is that?
Well, they just want to make sure that they, that you can't use this form for discipline. If this is for performance review.
This is a review. We're not going to say that it's not to be used for disciplinary purposes. If there's a performance issue, then clearly we're going to pull a performance review and say, we talked to you about this three months ago, da, da, da. So I, that's, that's a non sequitur to me. I do not understand why we would be putting, um, this is not to be used for disciplinary purposes. It's, but to be clear, we're not, we're not creating this.
For discipline.
For disciplinary purposes, but it's quite possible that it might, if there were disciplinary problems, it might be used for that.
Okay. So we will strike.
I'm sorry, I was super spicy about that.
No, I'm super spicy at the fact that they picky hewn, pick, 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 pick. I mean, take, they're taking out language that doesn't have to come out.
Yeah, I agree. So.
Just because they can.
So list your most, uh, um, okay. Uh, so have you successfully performed any new tasks or additional duties outside of the scope of your, uh, I noticed that since the last appraisal keeps coming out and I will grant that we are trying to start afresh here. So, uh, so.
But this is a permanent form.
Right. So this is a permanent form. So again, I, I think we can just say since the last appraisal period, if applicable, just keep putting that over. But, but then that way it's going to have staying power in the future, we'll be able to use it versus if we remove it, then we're never going to be referring back to the last appraisal. And that doesn't make any sense at all because it's our intention to continuously appraise people. Did what I just say make sense?
Makes sense.
It made sense to me, but I wasn't sure. Um, okay.
And they don't want to, um, just describe steps that will, uh, for their professional improvement or development or their career goals for coming year. I mean.
Again, um, okay.
It's arbitrary. I realize.
No, no, no. I was, no, I was going to say our, our reason for putting this in place is to be responsive to the fact that first of all, the union contract requires that people be given reviews, but historically they've never been given reviews. So we're trying to right the ship on that.
Right.
And beyond that, we're trying to, um, really, um, change a culture such that department heads are coaching and helping grow the people that report to them.
Right.
And, and again, there have been historically some people who have done that, but this is, this is codifying that so that.
Right.
Department heads are going to be judged on whether they are doing performance reviews for their staff. And, and I think it's important, if I was a department head, I'd want to know, does somebody want to have my job? Does somebody want to go to another department? What do I need to do to get them there? Do they need to take other classes? Are, are there online trainings they could do? Could they do some on the job training? I mean, these are all, you know, so this is, again, it is not, the, the, the mindset that this is somehow punitive, um, is really disheartening to me because that is not where this board is coming from at all.
Not at all.
And, and not only that, it's, it's hardly a strange thing to be evaluated yearly for your job. It's not a strange thing at all. I mean, it happens in every industry. I don't know why this is special.
The other thing I would say is, you know, we're trying to invest in the people that work for us.
Right.
Invest time, invest care, you know?
They need some improvement on skills or they, they hear about a seminar or, you know, why not tell us?
Yeah, we, we have no idea. This is how we find out what they need.
Right. So I mean, you know, this exactly it because, you know, if, if like, for instance, if we had three or four people say, hey, I could really use a class in Excel, then maybe we, you know, figure out a way to have somebody come in and teach everybody Excel, you know? I'm making that up because I'm sure people are way more proficient in Excel than I am, but, um, you know, but.
I used to be pretty good at it. Not anymore.
But something like that. So.
This whole thing basically is their contribution. So they took part of what we did and just kind of re.
I just can't see what's red versus what's.
The other thing that I really, um, department heads attached complaints, we were told this would not go to department heads. Why wouldn't it go to department heads? Departments, it's supposed to do these reviews, aren't they?
Yeah, I.
Well, this, there, so this is the employee self-assessment and they felt that.
Who reads it then?
So basically the personnel director would read.
All right. Lisa, here, let's break this down. Okay. I, I don't know if these are people that have never been in the private sector. This is not a new and novel concept at all. Okay. The way this works is you want to make sure that the department head and the employee are on the same page about, about the employee's performance. And so you have the employee say, hey, I've done this and this, I've done such and such. I think I need to work on this, um, you know, these, these are my goals. And, and then, so that's their opportunity to chime in with what they think of their performance. Because a lot of times department heads may not be keeping track as much as the individual themselves of what they're accomplishing, what they're doing. And they certainly wouldn't have any insight into what somebody wants to do unless somebody's articulating it. That's what this is for. I don't think we can agree that their department head, who they report to, who's responsible for their development, is not going to get a copy of their self-assessment.
Well, their, their only argument to that was that they don't feel that they can be honest if, if they see the department head is going to see it because they feel that, some of them feel that they're actually doing the department head job, department head's job, um, and they want to be able to put that on the assessment. But then they don't want their department head to see it because then they, they feel.
That's a different issue than a self-assessment.
First of all, first of all, it, I, I totally a hundred percent agree. Um, I don't think we can set up the rules of engagement for one extremely strange situation or some exception. And if that's the case, then the way it would be handled would certainly not be through a self-assessment. It would be through having a conversation with the personnel director and/or the department head. It, that is, and the self-assessment is not where that conversation happens. I, I mean this sincerely when I say, do we need to have somebody come in and train people on what a review process is, what a self-appraisal is, what the, um, department head assessment is, what the goal is for this? I feel as though there's a lot of misinformation that's driving the changes that we're being asked to make.
So the short answer is yes, we should because if they've never had one before, they have no baseline to go off of.
Yes, yeah.
So, I mean, again, I'm not, I'm not trying to come at this from an adversarial perspective on this. It just seems like there's a lot of people here that are looking at this with, with a level of anxiety. So one of the things that I would, I would recommend is that, yes, we do, as, as this gets rolled out, you have a training that discusses A, what it is, so we can actually tell them the, the what.
Yeah.
Give them the why.
Yes.
And then also discuss what the possible outcomes could be because another thing that's going to roll out of this is that if you're not giving everybody fours, they're going to, and you, and they're just doing their job. Like, like when I give a review to somebody, I'd be giving them twos if they're doing their job. And more often than not, you have a whole bunch of people that get really upset because they look at a two, but they're expecting a four because they're working really, really hard. But in reality, them doing their job is what it is. Going above and beyond, doing all these different things, that's a three. And then even, you know, if you're doing your boss's job, that's a four. It's not a penalty. It's not a penalty. It's like you're learning how to do your, that's when you get the force. So you might even want to include a training in which it's like, because a lot of this stuff really is sitting down with them before you even hand this to them and say, I just want to give you a heads up about what it's like for me as an evaluator and what you could expect, so you can prepare yourself so you're not walking out of here with high hopes and then getting insulted. Because that, that creates this stuff. I would also maybe change the language from, uh, being an appraisal or to a, a review. Uh, so that way it's, it's like your year end review. So it's not, it, these can be used as punitive things, but really what we're doing is we're reviewing all the things they've done really well over the past year, all the things they could work on, you know, the areas of opportunity. I, I look at it from a preservative, things you did really well in areas of opportunity.
Right.
That's really what it comes down to. So it's like, these are the things you're doing really, really well over the last 12 months and these are the things that we'd like to shore up in, and then identifying in here, how can we as a supervisor or as an organization help give you the resources and the supports that you need to be able to bring you up to, to that level where you need to, where you need to be? It seems like they're coming into this thinking that this is the, the beginning of us trying to like move them out and write them up in a punitive, in a punitive way. I think we need to look at it from a, a review based perspective. I think, I don't feel comfortable taking out anything. It's weird, like, uh, uh, how do these achievements align with your goals and objectives? Like taking out the, this idea of having goals and objectives and then not re-entering it anywhere? I don't know how you have a review of your past 12 months.
No.
Without any outline of what the next 12 months are going to be working towards. So it's like they're, they almost inadvertently and ironically rewrote this to make it punitive because it's not forward focused. It's not forward thinking. This, they basically gave a write-up to themselves and then said, don't, but don't use it as a write-up. And they also want to use it from what you're, from what you're saying, uh, almost tattle on their bosses, which again is an area of improvement because we're not using this to tattle. There are professional growth opportunities. There are chains of command that you talk to. There are processes and procedures that you're supposed to follow. So I, I think there's a couple of worries here, but like they gutted everything that is needed.
One, one thing too, it said, you know, they, they crossed out on page four, we were told this would not go to department heads. Right on page one, it says employee instructions, please complete and return the self-evaluation to your department head. It's right there. They crossed that out.
I am going to try to give the benefit of the doubt, but if you have not been in it, to me, this is so, um, standard.
Yeah.
You know, like my whole, my whole working career, this is how I've been, you know, I've filled out a self-appraisal, I've da, 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 you know, um, and, you know, so, but if, I guess if you haven't done that, then it, it might feel a little threatening. But I, I think the notion of only Lisa seeing the self-appraisal completely negates the whole purpose for this, which is I'm your department head and we should be meeting on at least a, a weekly basis to talk about this stuff. But if, let's say we don't, let's say, you know, we're a two-person shop and I think I know you inside out, um, but this is a chance to sit down and really focus on you as an employee. What can I do for you to help you grow? What do you need from me? What classes do you want? And hey, by the, you know, great, oh geez, you know, I forgot you, you did that project and this and this and that. You know, I, I don't know.
But I think, so I think all this language has to go back in. I also, so the idea also is a lot of organizations don't even give you the opportunity to have a self-appraisal, to have a conversation. The whole point of this is that this isn't the end all be all. This is, this is where the conversation starts to break the ice and come to a middle ground and see how aligned perspectives. Who else would be giving them the second part of the feedback? You know, so this is just, this is not the evaluation. This is their version of the conversation of the evaluation.
That's true.
So who would it go to?
Well, not, not.
So like there, this fall would go to you, but then their department head's evaluation would still go to them.
That's true without any input from them.
So I think that, that's why I think there needs to be a training, quite frankly, because I feel like we're missing components here that are so integral that that's where, that's where this is happening.
Yeah, I, I agree. And I think, I think the one-off situations are somehow driving the, the group decision and that really can't happen. It, it, it is not appropriate for you to be the only one who has the self-assessments. And I, again, I think, I think as we've said, I think this goes back to training and really understanding what the process is. And so I think the feedback you're getting is we want to stay the course with what we've, what we, what we've recommended. And we didn't do this willy-nilly, you know, we pulled from various, um, you know, various other forms, we've kind of combed through it, um, and I, I think it's pretty solid. And, and, you know?
I just want to say like, they're going to get evaluated by the department heads one way or another.
Good point.
We, we don't need anybody's input to give the department heads the ability to evaluate them.
That's a good point.
This is literally their opportunity to be, we're, we're trying to include them in the process. And I'm, I'm really curious if you have this conversation with this lens with them, if that explanation, that, that motivation is going to help them realize that.
And I think, I think that's an excellent point, Mr. Weeks. And I'd even take it a little bit further to say that this is our attempt to make sure that when people are getting appraised there at the year end, that the department heads are looking at standard criteria. So if I, if, you know, I've got somebody who's like, ah, he's a good guy, yeah, you know, whatever, I'm going to, he's fine. And then I've got somebody else who's dwelling for oil on performance. This levels the playing field and it says, look, granted, you know, it's up to each department head, um, you know, and their capabilities to fill it out, but it, it, it's asking consistent questions of them and of their department heads so that hopefully they're all getting, um, reviewed in a similar manner and they're all given the opportunity to give feedback on what they think their performance has been. So I, I, I think, does anybody feel different? I don't feel that we should really be making any of the changes.
I don't either. And it's honestly for their benefit because I'm just thinking about ideas for talking points for you, just out loud. Cause another thing is like, if we give their department heads an evaluation and we say, this is what you're going to use and you have to use that, and they're taking out all the stuff that are actually going to make them look good, like professional development and all these goals, they're actually handcuffing themselves in the future. So like, I really just want to drive home the point that these are designed to be inclusive and positive. The more stuff that they can put in there to brag about that matches what they're, like if they want to have a completely different evalu, self-evaluation from their boss, then so be it. But the one that we're going to be looking at is the one that their employee, their, their supervisor is doing.
Yeah, yeah.
Like, so it, it, it would be in the best interest.
I have to ask a question. What is the benefit other than improving to the employee for filling these out because their rates of pay are set by.
It's a fair point. It's a union position. So, you know, whether you're a rock star.
Right.
Medium performer or perhaps, you know, uh, less than stellar, um, you're going to get the same increase.
Exactly.
Um, that's the union environment. However, I would say that if we're talking about succession planning and taking a look at who might be the next person who's going to move in or what somebody else might be capable of doing. For instance, if there were an opening in a different department and we know there's somebody in another department who's got these excellent skills, then we would have had, we would have a documentation.
That's the kind of thing that needs to be emphasized too, that that's what we're looking for.
The other thing I would say is, is quite honestly, um, you're, in a way, this, this form is meant to make the department heads do what they're supposed to be doing and review the staff. Okay? And, and we heard from the, from the union that they were unhappy that they weren't getting reviewed. So we're trying to be responsive to that here. That's really what the genesis of this was.
And if someone's saying, for example, if you have, uh, your supervisor's taking credit for the stuff that you're doing to the point of like someone saying, oh, I'm doing my boss's job, you can brag about it there and we'll still see it. Like you can do it in a positive, engaging way.
Without saying it's my boss's job. We could just say I'm doing this, this and this and this.
Yeah, I helped put together the assessment.
And then you read it and you go, hmm, that looks like you're doing your boss's job. I mean, you don't obviously, you know?
No, it's.
And hopefully their, their department head would say they're doing thus, thus and thus.
The goal is that the culture is supposed to regulate how people take the feedback.
Yes.
So that's where your role comes in. So it's just a matter of just, it's just designed to give people kudos. And if you're feeling like you need to shore up something over here, you want to go to school to get a different license or something, that's where you put it, you know?
That's how, how we find out.
And, and I, I, I understand that there's a mistrust of something new. I understand that, but we truly are trying to be responsive. And we're trying to be good employers. You know, we're trying to give people feedback, opportunities for growth, like, we want to retain good employees. These are basic fundamental foundational things that a good employer does. Uh, and I'm sorry if they haven't felt that before now, but that's what we're trying to do. So anyway, I guess that, that little nag is beat up and off to the glue factory. Beat that up. Um, okay.
So if, if I may, um, I, so I did try, um, through Maya to do a training. Unfortunately, it, it, it wasn't responded to very well. So we actually didn't even get to that part. Um, I do think I need to look into hiring a professional trainer, similar to what I did with, um, the, the Yes Institute and things like that. So, um, you know, through the MMHR, through those conferences and meetings, I do have some other sources that I can reach out to to see what they would charge to come in and do a professional training.
This is important. I mean, one of the next things we're gonna talk about is goals for you and goals for the select board. And, um, one of the things that we have identified, um, is, you know, um, professionalizing and standardizing practices and procedures up at Town Hall with respect to HR, um, issues. Um, and, um, and this fits right in there. I mean, I don't see how we can do that if we're not doing reviews and people aren't, you know, getting feedback on a regular basis. Again, in my ideal scenario, people would be sitting down and meeting on at least a weekly basis or every other week, um, with their direct reports and saying, hey, you know, you did great on this, let's work on that, here's our priority for this week. Um, again, I may be a bit Pollyannaish, um, about that, I'll own it. Um, but that's, that's my ideal scenario. In the absence of that having, any, that happening, this, this requires some discipline. Because we're gonna hold you accountable for whether the, um, department heads are doing their reviews. So it's, you know what I mean? Um, so anyway, I don't know how I got off on that tangent, but anyway. Uh, oh, you, you triggered me. I don't even know what it was, but you just triggered me. And it doesn't take much. I feel, you know, this is important, it's very important. Um, okay, so do you feel, and I'm more than glad to join the next union discussion if you'd like me to, um, you know, as I have in the past, if you would like me to speak to where the board's coming from, I'm more than glad to do that.
Yeah, that'd be great.
All right, just let me know when it's, yeah.
And what we want to do is we want to reintroduce, um, the form that we had come up with. Um, so yeah.
This is gonna require some trust. It's just some faith and trust and we're gonna take a leap of faith here. Um, so, um, okay. Did, did you need to leave?
I'm, I'm just gonna need to head out.
Okay, what time is it?
Six fifty.
Okay, all right. Thank you. We will ca- we will catch you up.
Yes, thank you. I will be back shortly.
Okay. Okay. Um, and then why don't we, um, so we kind of talked about annual self, annual employee self-assessment discussion, um, town administrator review and, um, evaluation review discussion. Um, Ms. Green.
So it's that time of year again for the start preparing, um, for my review. Uh, unless there, unless there's any change, uh, the same form can be used?
Uh, did you, do, how did people find that form last year?
Sorry.
Fine?
Fine.
I mean, there's always a little bit of redundancy, but, you know, I think it's better than what we've had in the past. Um, and what's our timeline that we're looking at for?
I mean, February first.
February first.
Three days after Tuesday.
Okay. And, um, and again, as we've done in the past, uh, fill out the form, you give it to Ms. McDowell. None of us see each other's forms.
It's not this form though, it's a self-assessment.
No, it's not, it's, I don't think we've got that in our package. The, the, um, um, the way that it, it needs to work, um, so that we are not violating open meeting law is we do not see each other's reviews. Ms. McDowell compiles them. The first time we see the compilation is at an open meeting. Um, it's not even shared with us in advance of the meeting. Um, and you, I mean, just because the way we communicate, you could probably guess whose comments they are, but you don't know for sure whose comments they are. And it doesn't really matter because we're a five-person board and.
This assessment, the self-assessment.
Lisa.
Is something that Lisa would fill out and we would all get?
Correct.
Okay.
Now, before we meet in open session, um, what we, what we have historically done is we have each, to the extent we felt that it was necessary, um, if there are things that Lisa needs to work on, and of course there are, because she's not a perfect person, um, that we would sit down individually with Ms. Green. And it isn't to suggest that we can't discuss that at, in the open meeting.
Right.
But out of common decency, you don't want the first time that somebody is hearing about a performance issue to be in an open session where we're talking about their performance. Um, so we, you know, I think that worked out well last year. We sit down, walk through, say, hey, uh, you know, it said this and this and this and this. And if Lisa has, well, wait a minute, you forgot I did da-da-da-da, whatever. Um, and, or if you just want to say it's all sunshine and flowers, you could do that too. Um, and then we, again, meet in open session and we discuss, um, what, what the review is, uh, what the compilation review is. Does anybody have any questions about that process?
Well, I just, can we just throw in the calendar?
Yes.
Is that possible?
Yeah, I, I think it's critical. Yeah.
Yeah, cause that would just, that would just look bad.
Yeah.
Keep, that'll keep us honest.
Ms. McDowell, can we do that?
Yes.
Okay. And I think it would be a good idea if you can kind of, um, gently, or maybe not so gently, nudge everybody and remind them. Uh, because, you know, although now February first seems like, oh, it's so far away, February first really isn't. Cause once we get into the holidays, everything happens at a frantic pace.
It's also a short period of time.
Yeah, it is. So, um, okay, that's great. Um, then that brings us to, um, oh, uh, meeting calendar. Ms. McDowell.
Hello. So I looked at the last couple of years of calendars and I noticed that, I think what happened, that it got so cumbersome is that we were adding meetings, actually went along to meet with different departments. So I went through all the departments and I tried to add them on the calendar. Um, I tried to break it up as I went along, so it's not heavy on any one place, and tried to keep it to two meetings a month. I know that, that way if we need to add, there's an opportunity to add around town meeting, there are more meetings, so April's a little heavier and August is a little heavier, but that's where I was going. Um, and I did color coding, so kind of see what kind of meeting it is and what's needed ahead of time.
Okay, I mean, I think this looks excellent. Um, and if anybody's got any, you know, real, real, um, conflicts with anything, you know, just let us know. We can always, um, you know, change a meeting date, but let's try to stick with, with these as best we possibly can. Um.
Rachel?
Uh, great, thank you so much. Um, and then, uh, that brings us to town administrator goals. Um, let's see, we've got so many handouts. So we've got two different matrices and, um, Ms. McDowell put these together and I think Mrs. Rain, you helped refine these. But by saying we're fine, we're certainly not suggesting that, uh, it can't be further refined. It's still somewhat of a kitchen sink approach of, like, here's all the possible things. There's literally no way that we can accomplish all of these goals and perhaps that Ms. Green can accomplish these goals, um, in the year. So what I thought we would do is, are there any goals, um, why don't we just start with, with, um, well, I said we were gonna do these first, so why don't we, um, would it make sense for us to do the select board go- goals first? And then we can coalesce and make sure that we're coordinating Ms. Green's goals with our goals, so that they are in harmony. Um, all right.
I'll just say, I know this is very heavy on goals. I did put a lot in on purpose because I wasn't sure what each board member would like to highlight. So I didn't know, I tried to think about everything everybody would want, and then you could just, you know, governance has eleven, you probably only want to deal with two. And, and just take it down to what you want to focus on, and then we can push them out for another time.
Okay.
A year, or another board.
All right, so on governance, um, are there any that people feel particularly strongly for? Obviously, we have to set goals for the town administrator, so that's one. And we have to do union negotiations. We don't have any choice about that. That's, uh, develop a robust town-wide unified communications plan. Work with BOF-appointed boards or committees to establish priorities for 2024, 2025. Um, modernize and standardize, I think there's a typo in that, but, um.
Modernize and stand.
Um, human.
Standardize, yeah.
Yeah. Um, human resources process and policies development, um, and develop implementation plan. I mean, we're already working on that, so I think we do need to continue on that. Um, so I would say, continue. Is that what you were just gonna say? Yeah, or did you say that?
No, 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 I just, for the sake of, for the sake of it, I mean, I, I was, I reviewed this and based on the last conversation we had about this, I feel pretty comfortable that as it's laid out, where we're not trying to overwhelm you with a whole bunch of stuff, so it's not like tied to your job description to the point where you're, you're so overwhelmed with stuff that nothing gets done, I feel like this is a very good list.
You do.
It's right, yeah, it's ready to go. Cause I, my only concern when we first put this out was that it was just so much that we were just gonna overwhelm.
Yeah, it, it, I, I get that because, um, you know, at first blush, it would seem like everything was an equal priority and it all just had to get done. But that really isn't the case. And I think as we get in, you know, we will determine, um, by vote and by meetings, you know, what is a priority. And some of this, quite frankly, is basic blocking and tackling that we need to do anyway and Lisa needs to do anyway.
Exactly. So I think based on those conversations, I think the list is, is fine and it's, it's manageable.
Okay, does anybody feel differently? Okay, you, you, you guys are good with it?
Yep, I am.
Well, the list.
Yeah.
Well, instinct.
Um, may I just go through some of the goals a little bit, you know, because I, I've gone through them.
Yeah, we would love to hear from you.
Uh, so, yeah, the negotiate, union negotiations, as soon as they all, um, send us a letter that they wish to commence negotiations, that will start. And usually we'll receive the letters in about December. Um, so the, uh, modernize and standardize human resources process. So the employee, um, handbook and manual, the policies, I do have on my desk. Um, I'm finding that between with town council's notes, I'm having to rearrange a lot of it.
Okay.
It, which includes moving the table of contents, which moved everything else. So it's a slow process, but I have it on my desk, literally in front of my keyboard, um, that I'm, I'm working on, so.
And once you get through that, will you give us your revised version to review?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
So that's in the work. Uh, the bylaws in the process, we have the printout of the codification. Um, Emily's gonna make a copy for the bylaw committee, review committee. Um, so that is, you know, General Code has completed their legal analysis, they've put it together, we have it now to just go through.
And do we need to put a call out to see if we can, I, I know at a weak moment, I volunteered for the bylaw, um, committee. Um, but I'm wondering, I, and I know there were one or two other people, but it seems like we might be down a few people. Do we need to put out?
There's two people on that committee right now.
Okay, do we, I think we should have, I'd like a good little cross-section, so we're getting different vantage points. Um, you know, of people that have got different areas of expertise. Um, are we also gonna be circulating that to the staff?
The staff will get a copy of it as soon as we've finished our review of it.
Okay.
Because it's only in a draft right now, so I don't wanna, I don't want to confuse everybody with it. And again, you saw the size of the book, so.
Yeah.
Um, you know, as soon as we get a go-ahead, um, that they, that the review committee is good with everything, um, I will send it back to General Code so they can make any modifications. Um, I don't see any modific- further modifications we need because actually myself and our town planner, um, he went through the zoning, I went through the general, um, answered all their questions, um, which basically does not change the bylaw in substance, but it just fixed any language, um, issues that they found and, and, um, I suppose is aligning the bylaw with the state statute, um, rather than, um, being, um, in contrast with it. So they looked at a lot of that as well.
Now, do we need to go to town meeting?
Yes.
Okay. How are we going to educate everybody about the changes, that what's changed, what hasn't changed, tick and tie and da-da-da-da-da, without people thinking that we're trying to pull one over on them?
Well, I mean, we have a copy of the old bylaw, everything that was sent to them. So if they want to sit and go through the whole general bylaw, um, and then have a copy of the, the codified, they can certainly do that. But I'll tell you, it takes a long time to do that. Uh, so that is certainly an option that people can do. Um, our bylaws as they are now are online. Um, and those will stay online. Um, we'll just have another, we'll just have another area that they can go to the codified bylaw. So if they want to compare what they are, but I don't want, you know, we'll have to make sure that the old bylaws are clearly labeled, that this is an outdated bylaw, please refer to, um, you know, the codified bylaw, and we can give them a link, um, that will bring them to the codified bylaw.
And have we absolutely looked them over to make sure nothing is changing, other than like references to state laws and what have you to the extent?
That's, that, that's the process that's going on. Like you said, but you saw how thick it is.
I know.
It's gonna be a long process.
I know.
Um, to verify all of that. Um, I did it in Whitman, so I know how to do it, but it's just a matter of putting it all together, so. But it is in the process.
Mr. Weeks?
So that was just, just for clarification, so the codified one is not on the website yet.
It's not on the website.
Okay, so I just think that the, the, the minute we feel comfortable of that, that words, it goes out to the public, this is what we're gonna do. We put it on there and maybe put in, in, uh, its announcements, um, to have everybody encourage them, remind them every single time. Look at this, look at this, we're gonna be talking about it at, at town meeting.
Yep.
This is important, so maybe just throw it in there and repetition, repetition.
Yeah, that's a good idea. All right, awesome. So we're making, already we're making progress on several of these.
Yes, um, let's see, so the, um, the town master plan is done. So that was done with our town planner with OCPs, and so that's done. Um, and then moving into budget and finance.
I'm sorry, so Ms. McDowell, are you gonna, uh, we've got a, kind of like a completion column, are you gonna update the comments? We might need a little bigger comment section there. Yeah. All right, great.
All right, um, let's see, so under the budget and finance, um, American Rescue Plan reimbursement requests, um, you know, we, we filed everything that, that needs to be filed for our, for the ARPA money. Basically, as far as any kind of reimbursements, there's only one project right now that's based on reimbursement, but that is one of the projects that exceeds the allotment, so we don't know, that, that only will happen if they have leftover money, um, all that, but. Um, so basically the, with the ARPA, all of that is already taken care of. Now, the other grants, um, other grant opportunities, we, we do need to reevaluate all of that because the legislature did come out with additional grants that, uh, a community that is not compliant with the MBTA's is no longer gonna be eligible for. Um, so the days of saying, we're just gonna have a, we'll, we'll just, we'll just get a grant, we'll have to scale back a little bit because.
Or look in other directions.
Yeah.
We'll have to look for federal or, or, or other grants that haven't been touched by this.
So, um, uh, green community grant funding opportunities, um, we are eligible for the third round, which is the application is due in, um, the spring, April of 2025. So that is getting, um, getting together with our energy consultant and looking at projects for that. Ambulance billing and collections, that's actually handled by the fire department.
I don't know what, what, what that was about.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that, that's handled by the fire department.
Yeah, can we, can we delete that one, Lynn?
So, um, sale of remaining textile properties, um, you know, we, we can do that through an auction process, but it takes a little time to do that. So, um, we can look at the properties and see what ones are ready to go, but there is a process that we need to know.
Yeah, we definitely want to continuously do that. Prior boards have been very aggressive. There was a backlog, years ago, Joe remembers. Um, and, um, there was quite a backlog and we got active about selling them. Um, and so I don't think we've got the backlog that we had, but we should on a regular basis, there should, you know, like twice a year, we should be looking at, is anything new come on, you know, um, that we should be putting up for auction, just kind of get, I want to just get some process and rigor around, around that, just make sure we're being consistent.
I think we were waiting because there were, there was some, there was a possible change of the law.
Yes.
Regarding the proceeds, so we were kind of waiting for that to be settled. I believe it is settled at this point. Um, I'll check with our tax.
And I think, um, to the extent it is settled, um, and i- if it's going to affect, um, our ability to do this, um, and I, I am familiar with what you're talking, speaking about. I think we need to educate the board about that.
Yeah.
Uh, because it could change this, the approach that we take on these.
Yes, I'll see if Laura, Laura Brown is able to come in and talk more about it.
Cool.
Um, and then increasing the meals tax, we have to wait on that for legislation. Um, that has not been, uh, that has not been passed yet, either by the House, the Senate, or anything, so.
All right, so why don't we delete that one, Ms. McDowell?
All right, so under economic development, um, LED streetlight conversion, that was, that was done through National Grid did that. Um, and I think that was, um, right, actually right around the time that I started, because I believe that Matt Dyer was working on that. So the lights have been, um, basically they have been, um, transitioned over to the LEDs. And I know for a fact, um, because I get a lot of phone calls from people that didn't like the brightness of the lights, um, so.
That's also weird that it's in economic development, but I, I, so I'd just delete it because it's already been taken care of, but, yeah.
Yes, and it's, it's very unfortunate that we don't, um, again, inform today that the economic development, um, the Office of Economic Development is now grants that we are no longer eligible for.
Oh, can you send me that?
I will, yeah.
Thank you.
I will send you that. Okay, so communications and stakeholder outreach. So, the user-friendly website, that is in the process as well. Emily's been doing a great job with working on the newer revised website. Unfortunately, it was really kind of left in, in, what would you say? Not good shape, basically. So, she has been working diligently with the company to get the website up and running, but it's gonna be a little while. Hopefully, when we get a new IT director on board, they will both work on that and get it up to par, move needed.
All right, 'cause I mean, you know, I've been using that website for years, and I usually think I know where things are, but there's all these Easter eggs all over the place. Like, you find these weird things, and I'll be like, wait a minute, I didn't even know we had that. So, and I, I think, you know, if we talk about wanting to engage people and have people be more engaged, we've got to have information that's easily accessible and intuitively, oh, okay, I'm gonna look at this tab, and it will, everything I need about that will be there.
You're gonna be, yeah, it's night and day.
Yeah.
And I had a conference call with Civic today about the backup, and when we make the switch, because they're unaware that we're gonna be doing that. And he basically was sales and just wanted to sell me on their new websites, because they, the one we currently have is one of their base, like first ones ever, and they've been in company for 25 years.
Yes.
So, they said it's completely outdated, and tried showing me other websites and how much user-friendly they are. And I just had to blindly just say yes, but the new one has the calendar, the news upfront, the places where you can find agendas and minutes, the quick little button. It's just, it's very user-friendly.
I've looked at, so, you know, because most of the towns use that. Like, I've looked at Norwell, Hingham.
Yes, Massachusetts.
I think even Halifax is updated, updated theirs recently.
Eighty percent are on Civic.
Yeah.
So, I mean, they hold the business for Massachusetts, so revised is different, but I'm pretty confident.
All right, we'll keep chugging along in that. We appreciate the, you know, we know you inherited a little ticking time bomb on that, so, thank you.
Working on it.
Yeah.
Okay. So, you know, the rest will, we will work on. Downtown-wide improvements, let's see, Hanson Day, or we already?
Well, let's do the explore and develop digital records system. That is something that we've talked about. We are very paper-intensive, and I'm not foolish enough to think that a government entity can be paperless. But I do think that we, I worry, again, about redundancies. If there's a fire, if there's a.
I discussed that today.
Yeah.
With the revised.
You did.
That was the main conversation.
Okay.
We need a backup on our own end, because he kept on saying, well, Civic have, we have cybersecurity, we're the home base, we have all your nothing is secure. I said, I want something on our end with our servers that's secure. If the website, internet goes down, I wanna be able to still be able to access.
I agree with that, but I'm talking about the rooms of documents.
Yeah, so I was gonna go to the town clerk and ask her for the actual rules. How many years do we have to keep it? And if we, we found some old files, and we need to have them scanned and put into a computer, and try to eliminate that actual physical paper trail.
And Ms. Green, that's something I wonder, if Plymouth County? Talk about something that everybody needs in Plymouth County, okay? And they're always looking for skills of economy, okay? And I have to believe that Treasurer Tom O'Brien and the Plymouth County Commissioners, similar to looking into the pond management thing, I have to believe digitization of records is a universal problem that all of the towns in Plymouth County are having, okay? I mean, we've got, we've got a ridiculous amount of paper. I don't, it's ridiculous, we need to do something about it. So, anyway, all right, that's great, Emily, thank you for that.
I just got one more thing to add.
Yeah.
Mr. Baker spoke earlier in the week with Mr. Hickey over at the school, and he suggested that maybe we could work something out with the students there to help us with.
That would be amazing. Just another reason to love Superintendent Hickey. Okay, I'm a huge fan. Okay, so, that's great. Improve access. Okay, all right, so host Hanson Day? Well, as the person who's been organizing it for the last four years, I could say, we've been hosting a Hanson Day.
We've been hosting Hanson Day.
And we've talked about changing that. I talked to the Economic Development Committee about it. I also talked to the Hanson Business Network about it, and I, you know, I, I struggled. Like, you know, Hanover and some of our surrounding towns have got super fancy days. You know, super fancy days, you know, where they've got like a three-ring circus and all this stuff. And, you know, talking about the Hanson Business Network and the Economic Development Committee, they were both like, we like our simple, like, like just showcasing businesses, nonprofits, you know.
It's a fun day, I think. It's a fun day, now, I don't mean that it's low-key.
No, but it's, it's, it's just like a community, like low-key. It's not like all kinds of flashy.
It's good this year.
You know, so, you know, if you guys think we need to take a different direction, but those two groups, which are the groups that have been traditionally brought together to host it, both were like, we're kind of good with it the way it is. Maybe a couple more food trucks, because everybody loves food trucks.
So, we don't have, we don't have a bonfire or fireworks.
We don't have any of that.
We do fireworks at other times.
We do it at another time, you know? And it's really just meant to be like, hey, you know, cross-section of everything Hanson, you know, whatever. And, and I think it works, but, but, you know, we could.
It's been very well-attended the last few years.
Yeah.
It's been very well-attended.
All right, well, just, that was just a, I just thought I'd just mention that. Now, this, I just talked to Ms. Green on the townwide improvements. Work with senior center and library to determine how to meet each group's needs using current library with improvements. I met with Ms. Stouffer and Ms. Caffado last night at the library to talk about this and talk about the generator and a bunch of other stuff, because I'm the library liaison. And I said to them, okay, you're not gonna get the grant because of MBTA community, what's next? You still need stuff. You need stuff at the library, you need a different footprint. And we know the senior center needs stuff too, although we're making inroads on that, you know? I don't, it's, it's in process, but, so we're making inroads there, but the library needs to have some improvements. Like, I was in the historical document room last night, and, you know, there's like, I don't know what you'd call it, moisture between the panes, because, you know, the glass needs to be replaced. You know, so it's just that kind of stuff. You know, it's nothing crazy, but it's those types of things. So, one of the things I had suggested to Ms. Stouffer was, I said, look, the senior center went off and hired somebody to look at their needs, and that's awesome. That's great. The library went off and hired somebody to look at their needs. You guys are sharing a building. Somebody needs to holistically pull what you've both talked about together. And, and now that we know that you're not going to get a new library, because the town cannot fund a new library on its own, that's just not even in the cards, at best, you'd be looking at a build-out of the library, some rehabilitation of the library. And certainly with the McQuan property being torn down, we've got some latitude. If they need to go out, you know, that way, they could do it. So, the reason I'm going on and on about this is, one of the things that I had said to them is, we may have ARPA money, but it has to be committed by the end of the year. You might be able to hire whomever it was that you had to one or the other study to put together the study and tell us, here's the whole picture, here's what you need. And I don't know what that would cost, but I know we now just freed up $30,000 from having the mobile generator, so just food for thought on that.
What did I see? Did we get additional ARPA money?
No, but we're looking for it. She's applying for it. So, we don't need to discuss that tonight, Ms. Green, but if you could work with Ms. Stouffer, I had asked her to circle back with you and have a conversation about how to move forward, because, of course, you know, the library board of trustees, the library staff, the senior center, they're all very upset, you know, that they're not gonna get a new library. But, you know, life does go on, and other towns have had to just rehabilitate their existing libraries, and, and I think that's the case they're gonna need to make, if they need, if they need a different footprint.
Isn't there, weren't there parts of that building not constructed before? Didn't I see that on Tony's master plan that he had of the property?
Yes, you mean that original plan? They didn't build out the way it was originally?
So, it's, you know, look at that, see if, you know.
I think that, and for sure, like, the parking is horrible there.
Well, and the parking was expanded around.
It was supposed to be circular all the way around the building, which would have totally made sense. I'm surprised we haven't had people get killed in that parking lot with, you know, 'cause, well, I'm thinking there's some elderly folks, and it's a dead end, and it's a little tricky down there. I've seen some, we'll just say precarious situations, so just leave it at that.
I know one of the drivers.
Yeah. So, so anyway.
Not Bob, Bob's a great driver.
Yeah, I'm not calling out any names.
It's not Bob.
Intentionally. So, Ms. Green, if you could meet with Karen on that, that would be great.
Absolutely. So, the 29, complete the comprehensive building needs, assessment of all town-owned buildings. We need a facilities manager to do that. We created, the position is created in the bylaw, we have the salary range. We need to, we need to fund that position, we need to get that person, we need to post-far it, and we need to get that person on board.
I, I agree.
To do this, because, you know, I don't know who else is gonna be able to do that type of work.
Well, there was a, an assessment done, I wanna say it was like, it was before I became a selectman. I think it was 2015 or 2016. And it was sort of like a list of the buildings, and then, you know, like, the roof might need to be replaced on this building in 10 years. It was like that type of a thing. It might be worth refreshing. I agree, ongoing. This hodgepodge, each department tries to do their own maintenance and figure out what's going wrong in their building is not a sustainable model. And it's ridiculous that no other town does that. It's like, you know, and unfortunately, our buildings are showing it. And I just wanna mention my own personal pet peeve, and this is, I'm not throwing rocks at anybody, but the flagpole up at Town Hall is, every time I'm at ferries and I'm positioned a certain way, I feel a certain kind of way about it when I look over there. So, I would very much like to have Town Hall looked at. I know the chief and Casey do a good job, and as does Chief, you know, O'Brien of keeping up their buildings. But, you know, it's a lot for the library and the senior center to be, to be trying to figure out what needs to be done, the roof, the this, the that. They're not experts in this stuff. So, I don't know, maybe talk to Charlie, see what he thinks, you know? If you can take that list and refresh it, you know?
Let's see, I'll see what we can find on it. I haven't seen a list.
I'll see if I can, if you send me an email, I'll see if I can dig it up. You'll just have to remind me.
Okay.
I know I've got it.
And we'll, we'll search our records too, to see what we have. So, the fire station has a feasibility study in process right now. And then the highway facility did have a feasibility study done. They also had a study done of, well, the feasibility study was originally looked at for hots out. We had a more recent study looking at the grounds where it is located now, for any type of reason why they wouldn't be able to stay where they are, things like that. That, basically, that study said there's no reason why they can't stay there, maybe just looking at rearranging buildings or things like that. So, that is definitely something that actually the town planner and myself had a discussion about the other day, and hope to maybe bring some people together for a meeting, just to talk about the highway, where they are now, the condition of the buildings, basically, the ones that are looking like they're gonna fall down. And, and looking at some out-of-the-box thoughts about that area, that, you know, getting them to be open.
Yeah, we need to do better, we need to do better for them. And it's been, it's been a minute, as they say.
And regarding Hanson's ponds, we do have the ARPA money that was set aside for the pond management. I did actually talk to our, our agency agent, Dr. Skellinger, today. He is gonna put together a new, updated bid, and we're gonna rebid the, rebid the pond management process. We're gonna rebid that and see what we get for bids.
Okay.
So, that is also in the process.
Great. Anything else that stands out that you? I think that's a lot. But it's all things that we've been talking about, they're in process, you know, various stages. Not all of it falls on your shoulders. Certainly, we would expect that you'd be delegating some of this to people. All right, did anybody have anything else that they wanted to add on that? What are we doing for time here? Doing pretty good, okay. So, that brings us to town administrator goals.
We did that.
Well.
We did that first.
We didn't really go through each thing. I don't think we need to necessarily, because I think they're.
Well, one of them's knocked off already, hiring a new highway director.
Well, that's true, and also.
And how are we doing on the information technology specialists?
Yeah.
Well, the IT director position is posted.
Right, but we haven't got any responses?
We have, yeah, we have. December 2nd is the deadline for resume submissions. It's on MMA, it's on our website, it will be in the express on this Thursday. We did not put it back, but indeed, only because we received so many resumes from the partners. And we didn't open it back up. We still have the resumes that we got from the first round to review. But hopefully, we'll have the director on board. I'm hoping maybe early to mid-January.
Okay. And in the, both the select board goals and the town administrator goals, there's something about volunteers.
The volunteer database.
Yeah, database, and, which is wishful thinking at this point, but, but we can hope.
You'd have to have data to put in the rest.
We have to have volunteers to put in there. But I do think we need to do better about what is, what's involved if I sign up for this, da-da-da-da-da. And again, I don't think that's necessarily something you have to do, but you could certainly have Emily work on, you know, and I'd be more than glad to work with her on it. A lot of the information is out there.
I believe she is working on that.
Okay.
She has been working on putting together really basic information about the committee and things like that. So, she is working on that in between the website and the council.
And at some point, we need to have a McQuan visioning session. I don't know when the right timing is, because there's so many different competing needs, highway, fire, library, senior center, sports organizations. So, anyway, we can put a pin in that and make a decision on it later. Anything else on the town administrative goals and objectives?
On that line number two?
Yeah.
I think you ought to change the word customer.
Just a friendly atmosphere?
To employee.
Oh, well.
Yeah, just change it to a friendly atmosphere.
I think it should be an employee-friendly atmosphere.
Okay.
I think so, because I know it's not.
All right, so what should we say?
I don't know how you're gonna change it, but I know it's not.
Create a, I don't know about friendly, it's so subjective. I, I.
Welcoming atmosphere in the town?
Okay, welcoming is good. Welcoming atmosphere. Which is still subjective, but it doesn't feel as subjective. Okay, any, anything else? Okay, let me just do a little check on our agenda. All right, well, that, I think we're through all of our new business, so that brings us to our one-day liquor license. I was.
Can I just ask a question before we go there?
Yeah.
What are these pieces of paper here about ARPA? Expanded ARPA and approved but not ex?
Oh, so.
What does that mean?
I, I thought I was gonna have a town administrator report tonight, it's not in the agenda.
Oh, oh, well, okay, but you can, if.
But I can explain what that is.
Yeah.
It is, isn't it?
So, December 10th, Plymouth County will be coming to the select board meetings to present us with three, hopefully four, checks that will, that will total, basically, the amounts that we have on to do those documents. So, basically, one that says expended ARPA, which is $1,283,493.
Yep.
That is ARPA money that we have spent already, we've expended it.
And they're reimbursing us?
No, no, we had it and we spent it.
Oh, okay.
Oh, okay, all right.
Yeah, we're not.
They were going to present us with checks, so I thought.
Oh, the, that's the approved but not expended. That's the second one. But what this is, is this is, is a, shows how much money as far on the taxpayers' back, the ARPA money has saved them. So for the expended ARPA money, average, average $319.92 in, in taxes. ARPA has saved. And then on the other page, the $1,815,702.
Yep.
That's the approved but not expended, which is the checks that are coming our way. Basically, and the money, and the money we already spent, which was like a $418,000 for the Maquon, things like that. Tax money that we've saved the taxpayers, average of $449.89 for, for these projects that were all covered with ARPA money. Hanson did an excellent job with being very conservative, very thoughtful with the projects for ARPA money. And it is shown with this money that it saved the taxpayers.
I can't believe how far we've stretched those ARPA dollars. It's been nothing short of miraculous, the stuff that we've been able to get done. We're going to miss our. At a time when.
Just hold on.
Other money isn't going to be.
Just hold on.
Yeah. Okay. So with that said, I will entertain a motion to approve the 12-6, 24 Plymouth County Beekeepers Holiday Party Liquor License.
I'm going to abstain, I think, because of my affiliation with the club.
Yes.
So moved. Second.
Okay. All in favor? All right. And Ms., Mrs. Rain is abstaining, let the record show. With that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn to executive session. We will not be returning to open session. Executive session pursuant to open meeting law, Chapter 38, Section 2182, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel, police department. Executive session pursuant to open meeting law, Chapter 38, Section 2183, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body in the chair, so declares litigation discussions.
So moved. Sorry.
Okay. Roll call?
Aye.
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 We will be adjourning to executive session, and we will not be returning to open session.